Welcome to the City of Pasco's. I am looking for my little agenda here. Give me just a second. Here we are. Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco's Council Workshop Meeting. Regular meeting, I am so, so sorry. Council thanks you for being part of City Council Government. At meetings, the City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda, or they can be found at the back of the chambers. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public mesa met their comments and/or questions by contacting City Manager, City Clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, may I get roll call, please?
Council members Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Potam Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. And with that, would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on the items, on these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Item one, approval of meeting minutes for September 19th, 26th, and 27th. Next item, bills and communications, approval of claims on, in the total amount of $4,657,609.99. Next item, ordinance number 4610 and resolution number 4256, budget adjustment and bid award to animal shelter off-site improvements. Next item, resolution 4257, change order number seven with Cascade Bridge LLC for the Lewis Street Overpass Project. Resolution number 4257, funding application to ecology for process water reuse facility pre-treatment improvements, Phase Two, winter storage ponds. Next item on the agenda, resolution number 4259, Franklin County Irrigation District License Agreement, transmission main West Pasco Water Treatment Plant to Zone Three Project. And last resolution, number 4260, award and acceptance of 2021 Safer Grant. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Mayor Potam Maloney and seconded by Councilman Serrano. And... Sorry, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Campos.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
And Barajas.
Yes.
It was unanimous.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to next item on our agenda, number five, proclamations and acknowledgements. There's none listed, so we'll move on to the next item, visitors other than agenda items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside formal greetings. And with that, I'd like to invite anyone from chambers. If you have any comments, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council staff. I'm Carl Holder, 402 West Lewis in Pasco. 402 West Lewis in Pasco. And I just want to say that last week's activities with COPA, I'm on the board with COPA, the Rotary Club, and we put together a program. I hope you all saw the symphony. It was, it was out of the park. And it was a great evening for, for all of us to share and, and to be witness to something that was truly marvelous in downtown Pasco. And I wanted to, I, I was recognized by the Rotary Club and by the State of Colima, and the COPA organization is having an input on that. And there, I'm, I'm very humbled, but I would really like to introduce to you the promoter and the visionary that put this together, Jose Inigas and Tenor. Thank you, I'd like to...
Jose Inigas, I'll be speaking on behalf of Encanto Arts from 4838 Del Ridge Way, Suite A in Seattle, Washington. I wanted to tell you just how thankful I am of your belief in an artist. I, I want to make sure to thank the staff for your support. You know, it was wonderful to have proactive staff members who, who knew the, the responsibility that I was taking on and were there in to make sure that things were just supported. I, I think that this is an example of the artists that you have in this community. I hope by my producing this event, will bring more artists out to begin to showcase their talents here. I had the, the distinct pleasure of employing many of the artists at this event that came from Pasco, Richland, and Tri-Cities. You know, it was an honor to give them work. And so that they could show just what a welcoming community Pasco is. I, you know, this was a long time coming to do this event. I, I know it took a lot of time and energy and hours away from my family, from my wonderful girlfriend, to just ensure that everything was taken care of. And so with that, no matter what, it was because of your support. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, that I hope that this is just one of many to come. And that how vital it is to support the arts in the community and to support the artists in your community, because they did an amazing job. You know, and granted, being the writer of the show, you know, and the producer and the tenor is a lot of work. But ultimately, it just shows when you put a plan together. That's, that's exactly what that shows in the outcome. And so for that, again, I just want to thank you all for being there. And, you know, Dave, I know you're leaving next month. I hope, I hope this gives you some pride in leaving just a bit. And I, I hope I made you proud. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You did great, Jose. Thank you. Thank you for what you did for Pasco.
Appreciate it.
You'd make us more proud if you would've sung your comments, though, Jose.
Not gonna give us a sampling?
You should've been at the concert.
Good evening, Council, Stephen Baumann. Something for your consideration, I think the time might be right for. If the City of Pasco would consider purchasing the Track Center or the Happo Center from the county. I think this might be the right time. I think that the conditions might be such that that, that could happen. And I think the City of Pasco has the staff and the ability to maintain and operate that facility. And I think it would be better for the whole community. So I wish you would take that into account. Thanks.
Any further comments from chambers? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Thank you again very much for your comments and suggestions. Mr. Inigas, thank you again for a great concert. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, verbal reports from council members. Does anyone have anything they wish to report? Mayor Potam Maloney and then Councilwoman Roach.
Thank you. So last, last Tuesday, we had a listening session down at, at the Happo Center where we, where, where a number of council members were there, listening to comments from the community regarding the potential for lifting the ban on retail cannabis. The conversation was lively, but it was generally very polite. And so I really appreciated people being so earnest in their opinions and interested in sharing those with us and being able to do it in a way that I think represents our community very well. I think there's, there was a lot to consider. And I certainly, certainly heard a lot and, and learned a lot of different perspectives that I had, I certainly not thought of. So appreciate that. And I think tomorrow, looking to staff to make sure, tomorrow we have another listening session for, and that's going to be held at...
The Training Center.
The Training Center downtown.
That's just a couple blocks east of us here, right?
That's correct.
Excellent, thank you. And then I also attended the elected leaders reception for the Tri-Cities, put on by the Tri-Cities Regional Chamber. It was great to be able to talk to a lot of our electors from the region. So we had county commissioners, we had, you know, school board members, we had city council members, we had, you know, PUD commissioners, we had the whole slate of representation and elected. We, we actually had Secretary of State Hobbs actually came down, which I, first time I've seen a Secretary of State at one of these, so that's a, that's a pretty big deal. We don't, we do not get statewide electors joining us. We were able to have some really good conversations with folks that, that, you know, we, we don't always get an opportunity to bend their ear. I let our, our local reps as best they could know that we, as a council, established a subcommittee that's going to be coming their way and chatting with them. Even Representative Skylar Rude, who I think he said represents a total of 40 people in Pasco now. So, so that's still a slice, and so we're still, so I'll still definitely give him a call and bend his ear about these things. So, so that was, that was a great event as well. And then finally, we had our council retreat on Friday, and I thought that was really productive. It's great to have an open conversation with our newest, newest council member and, and as a team. So I, I thought that was pretty awesome. So, all the things I want to report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Roach?
Yes, wanted to just report back that last week and a little bit into the week prior, I can't remember the date whether it was Friday, the 24th, or what the exact date was, but the three candidates for the CEO position at Visit Tri-Cities were in their final round of interviews. I got to join for the candidate C. Went very well. We had really good participation from board members. But we should shortly have a decision here on that selection. Wanted to make comment about our listening session that we had just last Tuesday. I want to thank staff for facilitating that conversation and, and getting it scheduled and held at the track. I'm really grateful that this council was in favor of opening up that dialogue to the public, because people really turned out and packed up the room. There was, there were people standing all along the sides of the back and the side walls, and people were not shy about sharing their opinions. It was very interesting reflecting on just the, the overall, yeah, variety and, and scope of, of what people thought and, and what they were thinking about retail cannabis. So I'm looking forward to tomorrow's, and I hope there's a good turnout for the one at the Pasco Police Training Center. And then I didn't get a chance to share this, but two Saturdays ago, the Benton Franklin Recovery Coalition held a, a run or a walk on the Pasco Bike Path. And it was to create awareness and do some fundraising around the detox facility. They had a really good turnout, more people than they anticipated, a lot of donors, sponsors for the event. And yeah, we walked from Road 52 on the bike path over there at Wade Park all the way down past the Blue Bridge and looped back around, and it was great. See a lot of people who have been impacted by substance abuse in their family and their friend circle and really came out in support. So it was great.
Thank you for sharing that. Any further comments or any reports from our council members? Seeing none, I do also want to add that this last week was another busy week for us, as we not only had the listening sessions, but our delegate from Colima was still here. So we, again, working on that whole process of the friendship agreement and just showing off everything that Pasco has to offer, right? So it's, it makes me proud that he is very much interested in, well, the information that he's taking back to the, to the governor in Mexico is how they're going to provide more assistance, more support for the schools especially. And so that was his focus. We did radio interviews, we did, he went to visit some schools, even schools in Wapato, if I'm not mistaken, Madawa, Madawa, I apologize. But again, another busy week. So thank you, staff, again, for just, you know, making yourselves available to accommodate all this extra work. And with that, hearing, seeing no further comments. Seeing no further comments from our council, thank you. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. We have a hearing coming up, so hearing and council election on ordinances and resolutions relating there too. Our first item is the public hearing and ordinance number 4611, Tri-Cities Animal Shelter Right-Away Vacation, and we have Director White on line.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and apologize for having to appear virtually, but I didn't have a choice tonight. This proposal is for right-of-way vacation for the undeveloped and, in some cases underwater, right-of-way that's located near the animal shelter replacement facility location. Council set tonight as the public hearing back in September. And after conducting the public hearing, staff would recommend that council approve the ordinance adopting the right-of-way vacation.
Thank you. So before opening our hearing, does council have any questions to staff or Mr. White before we open this hearing? Seeing none, Mr. Ferguson, is there a statement we need to make?
Nope, just open the hearing and, yeah, move forward. Sure.
All right. So seeing there's no questions or comments from our council, this hearing is now open. Does anyone else wish to make any comments on this?
Carl Holder, 402 S. Lewis, I find that the water quality in this vacation is below substandard. Thank you.
Any further comments from anyone in the chambers regarding this issue? Second call for any comments regarding this issue? Third and final call on comments regarding this issue. And with that, this hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, Mayor Barajas, I'd like, I move to adopt ordinance number 4611, Vacating Court Street and Lena Street in Block 10 of Oakley's Riverfront Addition to Pasco and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Potam Maloney and seconded by Councilman Campos. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, just before we vote, Mr. White, while the water quality standard is not applicable to this particular item, is that something that we can address in the future? I don't want to put you on the spot with any standards or, or where we are unless you happen to have it offhand. So I, I'd be interested in understanding that comment a little bit better. Again, it's not going to, in my opinion, impact where I'm going with this vote, because it's not part of this vacation. But it'd be helpful to know if there's any further basis for that.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano, and, and no, I, actually, I would have to do a, a bit of research in order to properly answer your question, which I can do, but offhand, I don't know what in... Well, obviously, the vacation will have no impact on the water quality. But I would have to do some background research into the Corps of Engineers' assessment of that pond since it's their facility.
Thank you. I'll, I'll simply say that's not a burning question, but I think it'd be, because it's been publicly stated or asked, it'd be helpful to understand a little bit better. So thank you.
Thank you. There's been a motion and it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, ordinance number 4612, Local Improvement, Improvement District Number 151 Northwest Sewer Line. I, I did skip one, let me backtrack. 9A ordinance, let me see, resolution number 4261, Capital Improvement Plan. Did not mean to skip you, Ms. Buckley.
That was easy.
For 2023, 2028 projects, correct?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, scoot closer, council members and guests. Tonight I return with requesting the approval of the 2023, 2022, or 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. I have included a summary of the information that Director Sigdel presented to you earlier in August. So it's just sunrise. There are, have been no changes to the plan since her original presentation. So no new projects or changes to the projects that she originally presented. I know council is familiar with the CIP and the capital, otherwise known as the Capital Improvement Plan. And I'll give a brief bit of information for people listening online or in the audience. The Capital Improvement Plan is a comprehensive citywide planning effort. They, the departments do look at a myriad of plans, studies, and surveys, including taking into account information that they've gleaned from operational and everyday activity to look at what needs to be considered for the plan. This CIP does have 2022 in it, but the planning effort really is for the six years between 2023 and 2028. And one of the highlights or a big emphasis in the CIP was the anticipation of a lot of private development and growth in the City of Pasco in the decision-making. I'm sorry, I didn't realize the presentation wasn't up, so that made me stop for a minute. That's okay, I can just, that's okay, no problem. I'll just keep talking real quick. I'm talking and not looking. The, probably the thing that's, the only thing that is new in the presentation is on slides 11 and 12, there is a, these slides have just an outline, kind of what Recha had already done or Director Sigdel. And then this project updates are on slides 11 and 12. And in that, these projects are ones that were included in our CIP previously and now are included again, but with a change in the projected project costs. And so we wanted to include this and give the amount of the change and also the reason. And it's a myriad of reasons. There is a change sometimes in scope. It also is sometimes just that we've moved closer to the project and have completed more design. Some of the changes are reflective of plans and studies that have provided more information. But we wanted to make sure we highlighted these changes so they were evident to you all and the reasons were more well-known than just a number in a document. And so thank you for your consideration. If you have questions, now is a good time.
Ms. Buckley, again, my apologies, I was scrolling really fast on here. Do we have any questions or comments from council, Mayor Potam Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you, Director Buckley, for, for putting this together. And I very much appreciate the, those two, those two slides you highlighted in terms of the amount of change. That really helps me understand, okay, where were we and where are we now? In, in line with this, and I mentioned this briefly before the meeting, is there anything, and this isn't really a you question, I know that, so, but I'll pose it to you nonetheless as the presenter. How well does this align with our master plans that have been approved? Like, are we implementing the major capital projects in there, or is there a delta at all in this that we should be expecting? I understand that some, there's, there's deviations, right? We, we know more now than we did during some of the master plans. Are we in general alignment with the Capital Improvement, the Capital Improvement Plan with the master plans within the window we're looking?
You're correct. I can't specifically answer that question, but I do know that there's quite a few additions that were related to plans, because there was the explanation provided when I checked on them, but other people may be able to answer.
Yeah, council, if I could interject here, so, and good evening officially for tonight. So yeah, there, there are a lot of the changes, you know, that you see here are due to progress on design or conceptual planning. And, and then of course, the projects themselves, the genesis, a lot of them came from either comprehensive plan or comprehensive system plans that are integrated with the comprehensive plan. So you see a number of transportation projects that have developed through the TSMB, for the Transportation System Master Plan, for instance. And you'll see a number of utility plans that came from, most particularly sewer, and the facility plans for the wastewater treatment plant, work that was done out at Butterfield Water Treatment Plant, and then of course, process water reuse facility. And you've probably heard a lot about that. I don't know that we need to go into process water reuse tonight, but you see, you know, some of the change in a couple of the, well, three phases, all three phases of the process water reuse. And that has to do with work that the director and his staff have been able to accomplish over the last several months. So that, all those are reflected, they're consistent with the comp plan. I don't believe we've left a lot out, but some of those, some of the items, I will say, that might be identified in a comp plan, maybe beyond the six-year window. And so you, you wouldn't see those. So this is really kind of the, the next six years to 2028.
I appreciate that. I guess my philosophy is, and where that cross, crosswalk really helps me is if we've approved the plan and the CIP is implementing those plans that we've already approved, then I'm, to be honest, I'm not going to, I'm, I'm not going to feel a need to go scrutinizing a lot of the project details, because I already did that. be honest, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna feel a need to go scrutinizing a lot of the project details because I already did that, um, when we approved the master plans. So those deltas and then the, then the, that alignment with the, um, with the master plans, that would be, that's really huge for me, I'll be asking about, for the biennial budget as well, just understanding. Because we will have to make decisions, we always have to make decisions where, where this is just, yeah, the master plan says we really need this much of something, but we can't afford it. We don't afford it when, in the window that they wanted to or, or whatever needs to be done. Um, so, so we understand there's differences, but we, we as a council need to get, need to be the ones making those decisions on those budget trade-offs, and so, just appreciate that additional information, make sure we know when we're making a trade-off, um, as, um, um, would just really help me. So, um, anyways, really appreciate what you've got in front of me, I have no, no further technical questions, but I appreciate that response, thank you.
I, I would add to that thought, and I appreciate, I appreciate that thought, I would add. Sometimes a master plan may envision a need in a certain window and then maybe conditions didn't change the way the master plan envisioned, so it's something you have to move up or something you need to, you can put off for a couple of years and focus someplace else that might have moved up, so.
Absolutely.
Like, like you say, there's trade-offs as we kind of go through this and in real life.
Exactly, and that's why this, like, these two slides were, they changed, and it's a great example of, of, of what I love, because then I can focus on just that, and then, um, the rest of it is, is as presented, which is great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Looks like there's none. Thank you again, Director Buckley. So we'll move on to our next item on here, uh, item B.
Mayor Barazza, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, correct.
I move to approve resolution number forty-two sixty-one, approving the Capital Improvement Plan for calendar years twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-eight.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Milne. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? And it passes unanimously. Now we can move on to the next item. I've been rushing through this agenda, it seems like I just want to get home, I guess. I apologize for everyone watching, uh, this is, this is not normal. Our next item on the agenda, ordinance number forty-six twelve, local improvement district number one-five-one Northwest Sewer LID, final assessment. Director Worley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, mayors of council. I'm gonna be real quick on this one, we've seen it a couple of times already. Uh, on March second, twenty-twenty, council approved the formation of the Sewer LID. Uh, the original estimate for the LID was six point eight eight million. The final estimate for the, or the final cost of the LID is three point three three million. The city is, uh, paying into the LID fifty-four thousand for upsizing of some of the pipes for future, uh, development further to the north. Uh, there was a special benefit analysis that was, uh, prepared, and it has been determined that the benefit to the property owners exceeds the cost, so that's good. September nineteenth, a public hearing was held, and there were no protests to the final assessment that was presented then. And so, tonight, we present to you the final assessment roll with just new ownership updates based on recently subdivided parcels. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Can you state the amount, state the amount again? Can you please state the amount again?
The, the new estimate for the LID was three point three three million.
Okay, that's what I saw. Any questions from council regarding this issue? Seeing none, Director Worley, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And Mayor Barazza, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance number four six one-two, approving and confirming the assessments and assessment role for, of local improvement district number one-five-one for the construction of new sanitary sewer trunk line and other sewer improvements in the city's northwest Broadmoor area as provided by ordinance number four-four-eight-three and levying and assessing a part of the cost and expense, uh, thereof against the several lots, tracts, parcels of land and other property as shown on the assessment roll.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Maloney and seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? And it passes unanimously. Okay, we move on to our next item, uh, item ten, unfinished business. None listed, we'll move on to our next item, item eleven, new business. None listed, we'll move on to our next item, item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. City Manager Dave?
Well, just a, just a couple of items, but I, I did want to just mention that the LID, while listening to how smoothly that went, uh, we, I, I think, uh, Public Works, it'd have been a while since we'd done an LID. We started, started kind of back on those a few years ago. And, uh, I think this last one and the one prior, uh, evidence that, uh, kind of hit a groove and, uh, you know, it, it's a great development tool, I think you'll probably be seeing more of it in the, in the years to come, particularly with the, uh, growth areas that council's recently annexed, so, just throwing that out there. Secondly, uh, a couple of items I wanted to mention, uh, Mayor Protem, I believe, already mentioned the cannabis listing session, so that's six-thirty P M. Just for those listening, at the police training, uh, building in downtown Pasco, so, right across from where the old mission was. And then, pardon? Yeah, I, I wish I could tell you what it was off the top of my head. Somebody will quickly look it up and we'll get, get it ready before the meeting's over. And then, uh, reminder that, uh, Monday, October tenth, in our, our ordinance, and we, we had this discussion a while back about, uh, meeting dates, our ordinance say that a, that a holiday, which also is defined as a federal holiday, uh, which October tenth is, uh, so our meeting actually won't, won't be until next Tuesday. So our meeting will not be next Monday night, it'll be next Tuesday night, and, uh, uh, consistent with your ordinance. Uh, and the city hall will be open, however, so it's not a holiday necessarily for the city. But, uh, and it's two oh four West Clark is the address, so, for the, uh, for the Police Training Center. And then, one other thing, we, we had a, uh, subcommittee meeting tonight to talk about, uh, boards and commission, um, selection process. And, uh, yeah, we've been kind of working through a process be, that was initiated because of COVID. And, uh, uh, COVID didn't allow for the, for the live meetings, uh, for a while, council recall, and so, as, as part of that, and the, and the mayor, excuse me, the governor has recently lifted his proclamations, and so it's kind of a time to return to normal, so we had, we had a bit of a discussion tonight, uh, during the subcommittee, um, kind of comparing the two processes. So, obviously, with our boards and commissions, that's a, that's a mayoral appointment with council confirmation. And in the past, pre-COVID, uh, a council screening committee would meet with the mayor and, uh, kind of assist in selecting a short list of candidates, uh, for the full council to interview during council meeting. Uh, and since COVID restrictions, uh, uh, we started, uh, out of necessity, the mayor's been utilizing a subcommittee to assist her and, and prior to that, uh, Mayor Martinez, uh, in selecting prospects for interviewing candidates, after which the mayor forwards her selection of those, the subcommittee interviews to the council for full confirmation. So both kind of have some advantages and disadvantages, uh, the committee wanted to kind of discuss this a little bit tonight with the full council. Uh, so let me just kind of walk through, full council interview option, uh, some advantages, provides council members all an opportunity to ask a question of a candidate, maybe two, uh, and participate in the interview. Uh, the candidate, candidate interviews are live-streamed, that it probably could be an advantage or a disadvantage, depending on how comfortable you are with being on TV with your interview. Uh, logistics and working around a lot of schedules, perhaps a disadvantage, you know, you got all the candidates as well as, uh, I guess seven council members are gonna be here anyway, but typically, you've done those early, you know, because they're a pretty lengthy, uh, uh, process, so we typically started the meeting around six o'clock. Uh, so council has, doesn't have to stay here, uh, overly, overly long time. And, uh, you know, it does take, as I said, it takes up a little bit of co, council time. Subcommittee interview options, uh, some of the advantages, uh, it does allow for a little bit more detailed discussion with the candidate between the subcommittee and the candidate. Uh, it's actually much less of an impact to council as far as, uh, how time it takes in your council meetings. Uh, makes it a little easier to schedule around. Uh, I think, I don't know if it's a disadvantage, but, you know, something you, a, a difference is, uh, the full council basically kind of has to rely on the subcommittee doing their work and the mayoral appointment coming out of their work. So that you're only gonna see, the full council would only see and has only been seeing one recommendation from the mayor based on those interviews, so. Those are kind of the advantages, disadvantages or differences. And, uh, council, subcommittee had kind of asked me to tee this up, uh, so that you all could discuss this and give a little bit of direction on which way you want to go in the future.
Councilman Serrano.
So I, I'd say from my perspective, um, adding extra layers of having everyone opine on it, I don't think is necessarily gonna be a significant change. Unless, uh, I mean, I think there'd be value in getting the resumes or, or the packet to all council members for review, where we might say, hey, you know, I, I saw this one, um, and then if there's a list of finalists, then opining on it, but I, it just seems like we're adding a lot of extra work for an appointment that's, this tip, I mean, I think we've successfully made these appointments. Um, I guess insofar as we're looking at changing things, if we want to change the structure of the ordinance to remove that authority from the mayoral appointment to a council-based appointment, then I think there's value in bringing these people all to council for an interview. But insofar as we're not interested in changing that, I'm not suggesting we are or not. Um, if we're not changing that component, I don't really see, uh, a ton of value of, of bringing these people before council. Um, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm open to exploring that, whether or not we want to modify the ordinance. Um, and then we would change our structure, but if we're leaving the ordinance as it sits, then I don't see changing the structure as a tremendous value.
Thank you for that. Any further comments?
I, I would just note, it's actually a resolution, not an ordinance.
Okay.
That's in this case, so. The resolution does call for the interviews to be before the council, I, my apologies for not mentioning this right at the onset of the discussion, but so, COVID kind of necessitated another process, and so the question, I guess, before the council is, do we want to go back to interviews before the full, televised interviews for the full council, uh, prior to a workshop? Or do we want to, are we feeling, is the council feeling comfortable with the subcommittee process and how that's worked? And maybe we happened on to something that works out better than how we used to do it, and we need to probably modify the ordinance.
So any comments?
Resolution.
Any comments on that? Do you still want the subcommittees to do most of the work?
I guess where I, where I stand on this is, I think the subcommittees have been working well. Um, it's, it, it always has been and will remain, right? A mayoral appointment with the ratification by councils, is that correct? So, we as a full body still get to vote, and if we disagree with the mayor, um, we can not ratify a, a individual or, um, unemployment. So I think we still, and the council still has all the power we did before, so I think the subcommittee's gonna make a lot of sense. We've been struggling with really long meetings this year. Um, adding another meeting or two that takes, um, you know, an hour at a shot, um, sounds exhausting, to be honest, so I think a subcommittee would make sense, I, I, I feel comfortable delegating that, that, the, the down selection, um, process to that, and the interview process to a subcommittee.
Does anyone else feel different? Do we agree that the subcommittees have been streamlining the work and it should continue? Councilman Campos.
This is mostly just a process question, I may be, I don't really know what the intent of it is, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. So, i- if, for example, the subcommittee maybe screws the pooch, we, we take a hard left, the council has the power to then revise the resolution at any will, at any time they feel like, okay, that's all.
With no further comments, I feel the council agrees to continue the subcommittee work.
So we'll bring back a
I see nods.
Resolution.
I see nods, so I guess we're going that way. All right. Any further, go ahead.
I'm just wondering from Director Chapin if you wanted us to reply to you, to your email that you sent out directly.
Uh, I will be, you can reply to me, uh, today or tomorrow. I will be out from the fifth till the twenty-first, so, uh, please respond to Amy Hagerty, uh, if I, if it's past the fifth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions or comments, Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes, thank you, just really briefly, um, I had a community member bring up that our food truck code and what enforces that, um, looks a little outdated, um, I went and took a look at it, it looks really outdated, as a, for instance, um, um, food trucks. Um, so I was hearing a weird echo there, so, um, um, it can't, can't be on private property within twenty feet of a right-of-way. Um, and if you look at the whereas's and clauses associated with the, um, with the ordinance, um, they are very much an outdated view of what food trucks and groupings of food trucks are. Um, so there's a whole lot of restrictive language, like you can't have two food trucks within two hundred and fifty feet of each other. You can't have it on a street corner, you, um, um, if it's on, if it's actually on the street and not on private property, it can't be there for any more than one hour every four hours or something like that. I mean, I may be misquoting some of this, and I apologize if I am, it looks really outdated as a model for what food trucks are. And you see, uh, food truck hubs coming up in Kennewick, um, multiple of them at this point in time. Um, and what maybe back in the early two thousands was, um, new is no longer new, um, and I think we can, we should look at that, so, I would suggest that we, we ask the, um, potentially the DPDA, um, to look at, um, writing us a suggestions on some, on, you know, what they would like to see different in that, so we can potentially codify that in the future, um, with maybe some more modern look at that. So, just wanted to pass that on, is there, and, um, and see if I have the support of council, if that, if that makes some sense to people?
Yes.
Awesome, thanks, and I'll, 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 I'll mention to the, uh, the DPDA that we'd like them to take a look at that, given that they um, are the commissary kitchen for a number of food trucks.
Thank you. City Manager?
Uh, just a suggestion that we have food trucks out of Road sixty-eight, a couple other places, there's Burton, a couple other places, uh, where we've run into this two hundred and fifty-foot problem as well, or issue as well. Suggestion, we might want to also reach out to the Chamber of Commerce.
Pasco or the Hispanic Chamber?
Uh, we could do both.
Both sounds amazing.
Any further questions or comments under miscellaneous? Hearing none, we will move on to item thirteen, executive session, there is a need for executive session. Um, and, uh, the city council will now need an executive se- session to discuss, um, consideration of site selection or acquisition of real estate purchase or lease if likelihood that disclosure would increase price per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero one B and qualifications of an applicant for public employment per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero L G and discussion with legal counsel about current or potential lit- litigation per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero L I. We will be meeting for twenty minutes. It is now seven forty-nine. It is now seven forty-nine, so we will return at what is it, eight, uh, ten, eight-ten, and we're meeting with our leadership group. Thank you.
It is 8:09 PM and the executive session does need to extend for five more minutes so we'll be returning at 8:14. Thank you. It is 8:15 and council needs five more minutes and executive session will be returning at 8:20. Thank you. It is 8:21 and we will need five more minutes to finish and wrap up our executive session. We'll be returning at 8:26. Thank you. It is 8:26 and this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you everyone, thank you everyone online and on Facebook that stuck around this long. We'll see you next meeting.